May twenty. Helping the May twenty first. Meeting of the Colts ever planning commission and housing tax force before. Down the roll call. Nick Prebus down here, Doug Pratt is here, Paul Kay is here. Kathy Sugglin is.
No one done like him.
Okay. Michael Bender is missing. Megan, Jay and Dennis are out. And for the housing tax force, Chuck Chadwick is here and Bob Freeman is out. And for oral we need four.
Three.
All right. With that being said. I will uh. Take the motion to the second minutes. So moved.
We have two. Remember last time we didn't uh prove it so. If we could just do each one.
Okay. Now. We don't worry these two minutes.
May twenty first when.
Yeah, the only one of them.
The one I sent you was the April sixteen, the recent one, but you should have had the one from the previous meeting at the last meeting in the packet, if that makes sense.
Start moving April sixteenth and.
March nineteenth.
Okay, I don't have that, but I didn't have any comments the last meeting, so I'm comfortable making a motion.
Thank you. Can you get a second on the March nineteenth? We're gonna do one at a time?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can you get a second? We can do them together.
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay. Yeah. I'd get a second on the approval of the March nineteenth and April sixteenth minute.
Second someone.
Thank you.
I can't second.
I know.
Someone needs to second the motion.
I I didn't even read them. But now.
You can second the motion.
It's all second.
Yeah. Uh, Michael Bender has joined.
Michael.
Mike, we're going through the minutes of April sixteenth and March nineteenth for approval. We have. On the floor and it's been seconded. Any comments on the minutes?
I did not, no.
I don't. I, okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Very good. Uh, you know, or on this?
None.
Right. And the new business is the Rhodes application for a lot lane change. Uh, Schoolhouse Road.
So this application is pretty straightforward whenever you have a subdivision and someone proposes a lot line change. Um, what happens is I take a look at the application to make sure that it is zoning compliant. So in this case, it's one thirty-four and one thirty-eight Schoolhouse Row. They're both in any A one district. The minimum lot size requirement is forty thousand square feet. Um, the proposed new lots are hundred and forty-five thousand square feet and seventy-four thousand two hundred and eighty-five. Square feet. It's just a a swap of the land. And they're actually relatives. One of the properties is being sold. They've changed it for the buffer. It meets the zoning regulations. So tonight it is here. For you to. Make a motion. To approve.
It's, if I could ask, so it's literally just moving this property line in the middle of the properties to the.
Correct.
East, okay.
And it should just create an additional buffer for that.
Okay.
One family member.
Make a motion. We approve the um. Rhodes application for lot line change as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the lot thing, link, line change? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Very good. Okay. So. Tonight we would like to wrap up the survey questions. So that we can get this formatted and ready to to go out. Um. Karen has provided everyone with an updated version of the survey incorporating comments from. Bob, I believe Paula, you submitted some comments and Doug as well.
Well, the one she gave out was dated. Today, yeah, the sixteenth, right? So it doesn't have Bob's comments, does it?
I did not change the updated, but it's definitely has uh, I did not go over Bob's comments, but I went over the. So.
It it includes some of Bob's.
It includes some of Bob's comments. I had a discussion with Bob. Um. I think. I understand part of what he's saying, but at the same time, I think. We're trying to make a survey that is for the average. Reader who may not understand some of the land use terminology and may not know what a dwelling unit is versus a house. Or what an increase in density means from a land use perspective. So after your last meeting, I pretty much went back to the drawing board, took some of the questions. Out of here. I took some of the language to um and then tweaked it and then. I started from square one, so to speak. So I think this was what you were looking for, something that, you know, uh, was kind of upbeat, didn't focus all on affordability. Uh, and has some general question or general. Questions that are different than the typical your affordable housing plan. Um, questions and some of those general survey questions. My impression was that you didn't want to repeat questions. We already kind of have the answers to, but really looked at. Housing in general, not just affordable. And what people are looking for who. Want to live here. Work here and can't live here or live here and may not necessarily be comfortable with their current situation and to get an idea as to. Who these folks are and what they're looking to do. And and meaning some of the question, there is a lot of questions in here. That are pretty specific about households. Um, they think that's what you were looking for because if everyone who. Say you you sent this survey out and everybody who completed the survey makes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and owns their own home. It kind of gives us an idea. As to who's responding and who's not responding, and if we're getting a full picture. Of what's going on. Yes, Paul.
And I'm just playing catch up. I have two housing surveys dated for May sixteen. One is eleven pages long.
The one I just handed out, the one that I just gave you.
The eleven page.
The eleven page. I'm sorry, Mike, we didn't email it to you. It has just some kind of.
Looking to see like, I don't remember seeing anything today. Do updates.
Oh, you just, it's kind of had off the press with some of the comments.
Yeah.
Um, but it really has what was in the um. Their edits addressing some of the comments. I was thinking maybe we just go one by one. I'll read them. See if we're okay with them.
I can also email you a copy as soon as the meeting is over when I get upstairs to the computer.
You wanna go?
Thank you.
Karen's gonna go up and email you now.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, great.
So, um. Do you want me just to to read it and go one by one? I think that's, and I'll try to move.
Yeah, maybe instead of reading it, like paraphrase it.
Or skip the ones that are.
Executive somewhere.
Yeah, which, you know which ones have changed and which ones haven't.
Well, this is the first time you've looked at all of these questions as a group. This is a new.
Okay.
Version.
You want to look at the whole thing.
And that way I think that's part of, and I I'll try to. Make it.
So.
To say.
Right. I mean, the first question, what is your age?
What is your age? Pretty self-explanatory. Describe your connection to Old Saber. Year-round seasonal owner, home, business owner, employed in Saber, but live in another town, grew up in Saber, but live in another town, never worked or live in Old Saber, but wannabe.
So how are we gonna get this out to people that are employed here but live elsewhere? I mean, we're gonna.
So what we did the last time was we did a few different things. The first thing is we put it on the website. We also went around town and had flyers with QR codes. So, um, you know, they were stop and shop. Billboards all over. Um, we also had an option. The last time there was handwritten responses. We dropped them off everywhere from hotels to soup kitchens. To different locations because we wanted to be as inclusive as possible. So if you work in Old Saber, I mean. We're gonna do our best.
You know, to get to them.
To get to people. It's.
Can can we get this on the say Old Saber website? The one that economic development.
I can ask Jennifer to put it on there. Um, we could put say Old Saber.
If Carl include a link in his email and in the email box.
So what what I really want to do, I'm not trying to. Get is if you can, if we can go to the questions and then I can provide you with the distribution list. Um, last time we also did the questions in English and Spanish. We did not get one Spanish response. I believe we also sent it to the schools. So it was a pretty. Extensive thorough list to get out to people. I mean, it's not, we're not gonna put it in the New Haven register, but. We had a pretty good uh. Turnout last time. Okay, describe. If you are your own resident, how long have you lived in Old Saber? Less than five years, five to ten, eleven to twenty, twenty-one to forty, forty-one plus. And if anybody just. Has something, like I said, I'm gonna kind of go through these quickly. Have you recently had difficulties finding housing within your budget? Yes or no? Describe your current living situation. There's a lot of answers, but there's a. A lot of situation. Homeowner and year-round resident. Homeowner, second resident, residents in reside part-time. Homeowner, second resident and live in another town, which is my legal residence. Rent an apartment year-round, rent a house year-round. Rent academically typically September through June. Rent a room. Live with immediate family, parents or children. Live with extended family, relatives, not including a spouse or. Young children or your children. I am not a resident. I prefer not to answer. Other. How satisfied are you with your current housing situation?
Hold on, just say, great, just that last question here, the um. Second and third options there, I guess, what's the? The difference between the two words, the two different homeowner, second residence ones?
Okay, so um, we have people in town have that have two to three homes. I can, so some families have a house here and they stay here two weeks out of the year, but live in the Bahamas. So the thing is you're trying to figure out who's. Answering this and what their. Living situation is.
Yeah, from like a wording stand, I don't know if there's a. Clear way to. Does they see?
So a homeowner with a second.
What's the difference between?
Yeah, that's kind of what. See, I mean, the idea is you own houses somewhere.
Part-time Connecticut resident. So or are not a Connecticut resident at all in terms of paying taxes.
I think the way to phrase that question, maybe to make it a little clearer. Is there a homeowner, they reside here part-time, but it is their legal residence.
Oh, wait, clear, add that clarification.
And then the second question would remain the same.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yep.
And then live with immediate families. Can you select multiple things? Homeowner and year-round resident and live with immediate family?
Yes.
And.
How satisfied with you, your current situation, it's from very satisfied to very dissatisfied. If you are a resident and not satisfied with your current situation, what is the main reason? Your home is too small and a household a lot, and for my household and a larger housing is not available. Current home is too large and smaller housing is not available. Housing costs are too high, rentals are not available to accommodate my household needs. Ownership opportunities are not available to accommodate my household needs. Looking to relocate out of Old Saber, not applicable, unhappy with my livings. If you don't live in town and want to, choose all the reasons, multiple reasons, limiting you from living in Old Saber. Lack of job opportunities, availability of year-round. Rentals to accommodate my household, availability of year-round rentals that my budget can accommodate. Lack of housing available to rent that has enough space to accommodate the size of my household. Lack of housing available to purchase that my budget can accommodate. Down payment or deposit is out of my household's reach. What percentage?
The first one, this, sorry, just the first option on there. I'm just like wondering if that. Probably want to like strike that one or I can see people yell. Cause you can say I can't find a job that pays enough, which is sort of the same as, you know, I can't, the budget doesn't meet it there and. Or is it more lack of job opportunities in town? That we're looking for.
I.
Region or in, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important to note people. Um. Aren't living here because of the lack of opportunity, so they're going somewhere else. So important from an economic development standpoint. To try to bring in better pay.
To like lack of maybe lack of well-paying jobs in like the town or surrounding communities or something.
What if it says lack of job opportunities in the region?
I I think it's fairly clear to me.
Yeah.
That what you're driving at.
You can put region, the region, yes.
It's up to you. It's your survey, so. Add the region.
Like a regional job opportunity.
In Old Saber or nearby. Maybe regions too broad. We can work on the wording.
Okay.
Um. What percentage of your income goes towards housing costs, mortgage, rent, insurance and taxes? Um, sliding scale. Do you feel you're struggling to pay housing costs in basic needs, food, clothing and medicine? Yes or no? If you answered yes, which of the following do you feel is contributing to this struggle? Check all that apply. Number of hours of available work. Personal income. Monthly rental or mortgage costs, the cost of basic needs, food prescriptions, lack of transportation. Cost of real estate taxes, cost of hazard and flood insurance, cost of childcare. Cost of elder care services to take care of my aging family. Debt other than mortgage, medical credit card or other. All right. Next, do you or a member of your household receive any of the following services? Medicaid, Medicare, SNAP. EBT assistance from a food pantry, meals on wheels or similar food services. Rental, heating assistance, prefer not to answer none of the above.
Excuse me, four, but the last question where it says debt other than mortgage. Medical credit card, et cetera. Can we include student loans?
Sure.
Looks like a big audience. I mean.
Do you think there's a lack of housing density options in Old Saber and if so what? This one was amended today to say housing density refers to increased units. Houses, apartments, condos and multifamily homes per square foot.
So when you read the question, you said, do you think there's a lack of housing density options, but density is not in there? Well.
Oh, did I?
I mean, is that what we answered?
Right, the original question.
I'm sorry, that's in the wrong spot.
So when I did this, I, I'm sorry.
You, she edited. No, you can talk. She edited it for now today.
So I didn't want to put, cause there is one that's in density. Residents openness to support higher densities. But I didn't want to put it in the question, so they got confused, so I put it right above the definition. Right above all of the options. Instead of putting it with the question. So they didn't get more confused.
Oh, yeah. So you have higher densities down in like six board.
And it's like asked, you know, that's what we have to drag next to it.
Maybe we can put it on the bottom, so it doesn't confuse with the question.
Do you want that on the bottom?
Yeah, you have the asterisk next to it, so that'd be good.
So underneath all of the questions? Okay.
Underneath the boards.
The options.
So going back to the question, do you think there's a lack of housing options in Old Saber and if so what? There's not a lack of housing. Planning and zoning regulations are too restrictive. The town is not investing in housing. Developers are not investing in housing. There's a lack of developable land. Land is too expensive. Residents openness to support higher densities to allow more housing rental and ownership units. Second, part-time home and short-term rentals, Airbnb's limit the use of housing stock. There's a lack of reasonably priced homes. Most of the housing in Old Saber is for single-family and more alternatives to single-family houses are needed, such as apartments and condos. And this would be kind of a multiple.
So the bottom of page four, it says short-term, that should be rentals, not retails.
But I'm just wondering from like a wording standpoint, the ones that say like the town or the developers are not investing, do we just want to simplify and say like town is not building? Housing or the developers are not building enough housing? I don't know if using the word investing makes it a little bit more technical. For some people taking the survey.
I. Don't necessarily see that.
Oh, well.
Cause I mean, investing in housing is they're spending the money to build it. Um.
So say that again, Mike, you 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 talk about a third goal.
Yeah, there's the two says that, you know, the developers are not investing in housing or town is not investing in housing, like are we? Because you can invest in housing by buying existing houses, you could invest in housing by building houses. Do we wanna? Or do we want to have an option to say that the town is not building, the town is not building any housing, which we're not. Like developers are not building enough housing or is it just like not enough new housing is being built?
But if. A developer or the town invests in the current house. And makes it a year-round rental as opposed to a short-term weekly or two-week rental. I mean, to me, that's a win-win and that's an investment in housing.
Yeah, it could be. I just, yeah, just from like a wording standpoint, I'm just thinking of your average person out there reading this who's not.
I know, it's it's a good, and what if it's a town and developers are not investing? In. Housing rehabilitation or new construction.
I. That's fine. I just think we're making it wordy, that's all. But that's fine.
Town is not investing efforts. In housing, so to. I think Mike's point is we're not, the town's not paying hard cash for to build posts, but they can't. With zoning and. Partnering with developers and.
Right.
Sometimes they'll have a housing authority and they'll build stuff like that's not something we've done or talked about, but.
So so what if we say? The town and the developers are not financially investing in housing.
That's worse.
I think we're.
Yeah, I know.
No, I I don't know.
I I think. I mean, I don't know. If it's not, I I.
I suggest.
I see this being weird, so.
I suggest that number three be eliminated. That's my suggestion.
But you could argue. You know, should there be a um, a land agency here that's permitted to building houses?
Well.
Then you have.
That that's why we're here is to determine the next steps.
Would you look at the the unfair of the town owns the land? And someone else owns the village.
The town bought the land for a dollar, they partnered with Hope and the town.
So that's how the town would be investing.
Yeah.
Have it exempted. And I don't think many people know that.
Okay.
Particularly right.
So I I'm.
I don't know how it is.
I would leave it as is. I think we're making it too complicated.
I think simple is that we want it as easy for the average person who's, yeah, doesn't, doesn't work in planning, zoning and real estate to read these and be able to answer the questions and.
Then come up with an alternative.
Yeah, what's I I thought they're not building housing, that's, yeah.
I understand that, but. We can't just say the question isn't working. And not have. A concrete suggestion. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Then.
No, that that would be my suggestion.
I forget how long now. It's time we wrap it up. But I don't want to sound like this is the way it's gotta be, but. Come up with something that doesn't sound so wordy and help. That's all. You don't have to do right to spin it. I mean.
Well, I mean, the only other way to do it is you could just say town is not. Investing efforts in housing, town is not investing money into housing and doing safer.
Resources.
Yeah.
Okay, resources can be cash, it can be people, it can be.
Investing resources in housing? I don't, I like that. That I don't have a problem.
Town is not investing enough resources.
In houses.
So we're doing town and developers or just for the town question?
Just for the town.
Just the town. That good one? Town is not having enough resources.
Investing.
Investing in the resources in housing.
Yep.
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Sure.
Um, I. We should not underestimate the people who are gonna be reading this. I think that they'll be able to figure out they're not stupid. And I think they'll be able to understand whether or not the town is being invested or whether or not the um. Um, was it developers are? So I I agree, we can't keep it too wordy. But I also think we're gonna start underestimating how people really are gonna be able to understand this very well. And that's all I. That's my input. What you came up with, this is this last. Um. Bit here that you just said, I agree with it. Go go with that. But don't make it wordy. And don't underestimate the people who are gonna be looking at this. That's all I say.
Yeah, and. When we say short-term rental. I don't know why, but it. We always say Airbnb and it's not just Airbnb.
Should we just strike that out?
I think should. Just short-term rentals.
But then what's the definition of a short-term rental? Is it?
Is that a common enough term?
During weekend, I think Airbnb kind of.
Summer cottage.
I love uh, short-term rentals, then in parentheses, put less than a month.
Thirty days or less.
There you go, thirty days or less.
Some side of Airbnb, thirty days or less.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, so I guess we just got to that one.
Yeah, and then at the end of that, it says, can we omit this part of the question, parentheses, you want to strike that?
Hold on.
I'm wondering if we can admit, give rid of the whole question.
It's kind of a hot topic, isn't it? Or it could be.
Well, I mean. It it is. I mean, there's some residents who think we should have. A prohibition on Airbnbs. I think you you, I mean, it would be more of an ordinance, but I think it's a good way to get an opinion.
But there's other people who have a house that's vacant most of the year and they rent it out occasionally, a week at a time.
Let's also not forget that Old Saber's economy has been built on weekly rentals from housing stock. In the beach communities.
Some people depend on not to pay the mortgage.
Absolutely.
We want even to shorten the question, instead of having that second part where it asks about restricting, just says, do you believe short-term rentals limit year-round housing options? Question mark. That we're not really putting an opinion on, yeah.
Saying short-term rentals and B and B, Airbnb.
We're gonna give it Airbnb, thirty days or less.
Thirty days or less.
We're trying to give people, if people, you know, most people don't think it's a problem, then we move on and, yeah.
The only reason I want to eliminate Airbnb is that there's more than Airbnb that provide. Anything less than thirty days.
And Airbnb is really a kind of a.
It's like a Kleenex.
No, air, I mean, Airbnbs.
But they have a bad connotation.
But there's other ser, so my understanding is that Airbnb is that was a term created. As far as it was like a marketing thing, so someone in California needed some extra money and. Went through and said, well, I'm just gonna go through and have an Airbnb and put an extra bed in here and rent it for the weekend or rent my apartment.
That's that's how the founders started Airbnb, yes.
So. There's other, other, I guess.
There's VRBO.
VRBO, exactly.
There's Jay and Emreality who makes half a living on short-term rentals.
Airbnb is just one of the services like VRBO. So I think you're right, thirty days or less makes more sense because you're.
And.
Targeting one.
I think Airbnb has more of a negative connotation than VRBO, so I think.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
So we're doing.
So just stepping back, what's the purpose of the question? Because I think everybody would answer it, yes, it is limiting options. I think the question is. Is. Are they still worth having in light of the housing availability? Is are they still worth having in light of the housing availability? Something like, do you feel uh short term rentals are still needed? Despite. A perceived shortage. I don't wanna make it too hard.
See, and I don't believe short term rentals are limiting the year round livability here.
I think that's why we're asking the question to find out if more people in town do think that or not.
Both of the short term rentals I'm aware of, they're not gonna rent it year round.
Except for the few people who own properties for that.
Own properties for that specific.
Reasons, so I I think just adding, asking the general question, it doesn't hurt.
No, I I don't think it hurts. I don't think it's gonna be as black and white than it's gonna be.
Do you believe short term rentals limit year round? Or maybe you should say limit housing options.
Do that. Makes it broader.
I'm okay with it, I just don't know what we get off it because, you know, maybe I just don't understand it, but it's. If you have part time rentals, yeah, that limits the housing market. This, if you have a hundred short term rentals, then.
But I.
All I'm saying is that.
Some, some could be families that aren't very year round.
They're not using the house. The house isn't being used, period.
But but Joe Public like me, I don't know what that ratio is, it's just. My stereotype image is, yeah, it's it limits options. If people are buying them and they just rent them out, they live in New York City and they're never in Old Sabre, they're just a a land, a long distance.
I don't think we have that many. I think the majority of our short term rentals are people that own the house, use it part of the time. And rent it when they're not using it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll leave it like we talked about the first half.
And take the rest of it off, so housing options, question mark, omit that.
Do you believe short term rentals of thirty days or less limit year round housing option?
Yeah.
Limit year round, we're gonna keep that around.
I mean, if you wanted to, you could make another question that says, do you believe restricting short term rentals will provide more available houses?
Yeah, I think that was Bob's comment.
Cause you do, you are asking two questions in one.
Okay, I think.
If we wanna keep them both, I'd say, yeah, two questions is the way to do it, but do we eat them both?
I I mean, I think some of the questions here. We've been looking at housing so much, I think we kind of know what the answer is, but it's interesting to see. What the responses will be from people who haven't been as focused on it as as we have.
I wanna know if there's a real desire to limit. The ability to do short term rents.
Alright, so we're just breaking into.
Maybe we should keep them both in there, yeah. Ninety percent comes back says, yeah, I wanna limit on them, maybe we maybe we should look at it a little bit more closely, but.
So we just go, do you think short term rentals? Um, limiting short term rentals will create more. Year round housing.
Right.
Right? So we've got two sections here based on two different types of households. Two or less. And three or more, same question. How many people in your household are under the age of eighteen? How many people are over the age of eighteen? How many people are over the age of sixty two? Which options do you prefer for your home? This is for both now, so I think I'm kinda trying to consolidate if it's two or three. And then we just standardize the answers. Um, obviously, it's unlikely someone under the age of eighteen is gonna look for senior housing, but we figured we just kinda keep.
Right.
Everything the same. What options do you prefer for your home? Studio apartment. Single family home for rent. Single family home for purchase. Two to three family home for purchase, two to three family home to rent. Multi-family housing or apartments. Or building. Mixed use housing above or behind commercial uses such as retail or office space. Accessory apartment to apartment accessory to a single family unit, AKA mother in law apartment or ADU. Not applicable, other.
Is this a choose one option or a pick as many as you want type of question?
I think it's a choose.
Choose one.
You said one of this, there one missing, it's like a the condo option, or would that fall under like the two to three or the multi family?
I think it would be two to three, it's.
Cause just the way it's like, is it was this, am I buying a three family home or am I buying like a unit in a three family home?
Well, one's two to three family home for purchase, two to three family. Home is a rental to, you know, unit to, maybe I should say unit.
There's like unit in or something.
Unit to rent.
Yeah.
Is it to rent out?
No, unit to rent, meaning I wanna live in a three family house versus an apartment building.
Right.
And you're gonna rent out the other units?
No.
No.
You're paying.
Yeah, I think that's that's the clarification. If it's just like a sick, a unit in.
So.
So in in this one, you know. I kinda stopped because we can really. Go to town with some of them. So for example. You know, I may wanna live in a rooming house, I may wanna live on a boat. I, you know, so it's how many of these? You know, realistically, I mean, we do have people who live all year round on boats.
Right.
Um, but as far as a choice, I think that would be the other. I think, you know, probably one out of. How many out of every ten people is gonna say I wanna live on a boat versus an apartment?
But I think. On the second two, three family home. It should be two slash three family home. Uh, to rent. A single unit.
Yes.
To rent a single unit.
Yeah. Cause it does sound like you're renting a whole place.
So a a rental, a rental, a rental apartment in a two to three family home.
And if somebody wants out there to rent a whole house and then sublease.
And then.
Well, that would be the one who wants to purchase it.
Right.
I mean, if you're gonna purchase it, you're not gonna live in all three.
No.
Unless you're Airbnb, just kidding, I'm not gonna go there.
Um, I think, I think we do need to add one though, multi family housing. Um, or make it specific to a condominium. Or you could put single family home or condominium for purchase.
Okay, I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah. Cause we did miss that.
That's great. And then we'll add that in both sections.
Right.
Next.
Yeah.
What are the top three neighborhood amenities you are looking for? Walkable location to parks, schools, restaurants and services, drivable location away from downtown. Access to public transportation, train or bus route near the beach. Private outdoor space, no yard or exterior property maintenance, yard work, painting, et cetera, et cetera, not applicable, other. What are the top three? Home amenities you're looking for? Studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three plus bedrooms. This is multiple choices, obviously. Less than a thousand square feet, a thousand to fifteen hundred, fifteen oh one to two thousand. Two thousand plus square feet of living area. One story, two stories, two or more stories, accessible unit, not applicable, other.
So you don't wanna put. Location, do I wanna put location in there?
So we did go through.
Waterfront or each association.
Isn't that kind of what the other, the question above is?
And then we took the question out, what part of town do you live in? Because it's nearly impossible.
Yeah.
North is Route one, south is Route one, you know, on the river, on the sound, so.
And I don't know what we were gaining from it.
I don't, I.
I don't think we're getting much.
And if you don't live in town, it doesn't matter.
Right.
And a quick question or comment? How you mentioned water front? The one right above near beach, should we put near water? Body of water, cause there's some that are on the beach, but also near the body. Like there's some across from the transfer station, there's some sort of pond up there. So if we just encompass it as water instead of just at beach.
Or is it two different options? Near a beach, near water or? Near water is probably the main thing people look for.
Yeah. Yeah, you have, you know, Otter Cove on the Canadian River.
Right, and then it's, that's a good point.
Yeah. Near beach or. More.
Near beach or water.
Good. So those questions all get repeated again. For households of three or more members, please answer the following. Except it obviously expands that you can answer. Um. A little bit differently as far as, you know, you can have two people versus one, cause the other one's two. But the questions are all the same until we get to. Section. Three. Oh wait, no. Section three. Section three, do you support more housing density in Old Sabre? Yes or no? And it has that definite definition, we'll move to the bottom. Do you support increased housing density in your neighbor?
So just going back to the definition of housing density, it says, uh. First increase units per square foot. Should it be per square foot of land? And when I first read it, I'm thinking, alright, is it square feet of living space?
Uh, it it probably should say land. I came up with the definitions and I think. I was just thinking land. I didn't write it, it needs to say land, you're right. I think in section three and in section four, I think the definition should be at the top. Cause it applies to all the questions.
Well, once we get, I think, into the format of the survey, maybe we'd have a little footnote or something that we had to work on. Um, I just need to get the questions together to try to start plugging in photos and and things like that. Okay. Alright, so we did, do you support increased housing density in your neighborhood?
Right.
In general, if you support increased density, what type of housing would you like to see constructed? Single family clustered on one lot, single. Family closer together on smaller lots. Two to three family homes, multi family four plus in one building up to three stories that share a uniform hallway. Multi-family four plus in a building up to three stories high with separate entrances and multiple floors per unit. Mixed use housing above or behind commercial uses such as retail or office space. Apartments accessory to a single family unit. Uh, assisted living housing with skilled nursing care.
Hey, so I hate bringing myself, I'm going to, so the question above, do you support increased housing density in your neighborhood? That's why we had that neighborhood question in there. Because if people say yes, you wanna know what where are they? You know, is it north of ninety five, there's the the beaches, you can't increase the density, you know what I mean? That's where that intel would be valuable. But I know, I know there's so many neighborhoods, do you want a generic one like?
But I guess the question is, if someone is supporting housing density. Are they supporting it as long as it's not in their neighborhood? I I think that kind of clearly answers. Well, it doesn't matter what neighborhood you're in, do you support it overall, whether it's in your backyard or downtown?
Right.
I I don't think we need to get into the.
Okay, but if you have fifty yeses, I don't know, five hundred nos.
For that question.
Yeah, it seems like it'd be valuable to know, well, who's saying yes in their neighborhood is it? I don't know. I'm not hung up on, I'm just.
It's just, it's just very hard to define.
Neighborhoods.
Unless.
What do we wanna say? If yes, uh, which neighborhood are you in? That's when you can put in a prefer not to answer.
Right.
Which puts you back where you don't wanna be, where you don't wanna be.
Right.
No information.
Right.
I wonder if there's a way we could take them back. And somehow click, say we made it into quadrants of some sort.
Ooh, that's an easy thing.
And you could click on it.
Or you could just put, have the map and do once, section one, section two, section three or section four. And they can just fill in one, two.
And then have one with kind of the downtown. So kinda pick two areas, you know, you pick. Over by the preserve, you pick the Otter Cove, you kinda just build everything into quadrants, but then do the whole trade.
So Chris has seen slide where you get the answer to your question.
Right.
Where do you live?
So what if we made that upfront though? As opposed to deeper into the survey.
Yeah, instead of right next to.
Like answer question two.
Section do you live in or something and have your eight or ten different. Of quadrants to make it meaningful.
Take it away from the question.
To your.
Show Fendrick it's oversized.
Well, I I guess if we can, if we can figure this out with the map.
Yeah.
Then do we wanna have another question? If you don't support it in your neighborhood, where would you like to see it?
Ooh, that's very good.
Well, it's almost, could you almost phrase the question that way? Just like, where in town do you support?
Yeah.
Yeah, where.
Like, do we really care where they live? We just care where they support it and.
Every yes.
See, I would like to see the where you live question, and I wanna see it upfront.
And I'm just.
So that it's away from this question.
I'm gonna pick on Fendrick if.
Yeah.
All the answers are coming from Fendrick. Say move everybody to Main Street, or if they're all coming from. Main Street saying move everybody up by the preserve, then you kinda have an idea. You know, who's answering which way.
That's a good idea with the map and the zones. Where do you live? And then. You could ask, where do you think?
Just to go, I I. Think the housing density definition needs to be worked on. I I I I.
What's wrong with it?
I I. Housing density refers to increased units. It it doesn't. It doesn't uh make sense really.
Then you're reducing the per square foot and then we're adding of land, so it's increased units per square foot of land. So again, we.
And the unit for wisdom is more than that.
That's too difficult to 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 understand. You're saying, um, housing density refers to. I I would do do something. Um. Ha, uh, the. Density, uh. Density refers to how. Much housing. Well, it's actually more complicated because it's zoning laws.
Well, that's what we're trying to kinda stay out of.
I know, I I I, um, but.
That's why we used unit.
Used units, it doesn't, um. I I I, okay, I'll I'll think on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, yeah, housing density is not necessarily increased. The housing density is just how many units do you have per?
But it is, but it is increased.
Well, you could increase density or you could decrease density. Like density is just how many houses you have in that given amount of land.
What you're, what you want to say is. That you're going to increase the density that it currently exists under.
Well, we're not, it depends on the question though.
I I I know.
But yes, that's.
It says decreased, I mean, we could have a question that says, do you support decreased density? Ours just happened all go to increased.
Yeah.
It could, to Mike's point, it could say more housing density refers to increased units.
Oh.
Yeah, I was asking him, do you support?
Yeah, you're getting questioning how people will read this. I read it as housing density referred to increased units, houses, apartments, condos and multi family homes per square foot.
Oh, okay, I I I don't, oh, okay.
We're gonna add that like of land part to the per square foot?
I don't know what to do with anything. I I just think it's. Kind of a poor wording, but I I have to think about it.
More sense, housing density refers. To the number of units, houses, apartments, condos per square foot.
Yes.
And then our question say, do you support increased?
Yeah.
Because you could have decreased and then that makes it general enough that you resolve up.
Yeah, that's good. Replace increased with the number of.
Who would have thought this could be so complicated? Alright, next. In general, if you support increased density, what type of housing would you like to see? Didn't I go over this? Oh, no, we went backwards.
Yeah, and, and so we're all set, you're going to figure out the math and.
I'm going to try to see how we can figure it out, but I think we do kind of one downtown area and then just do. Quadrants, so that, you know, like four.
Or six or whatever, yeah, you can figure that out, okay, I just want to make sure we got that. Thank you.
In which of the following areas should one family homes be allowed at higher densities? On one or smaller lots? All zoning districts that allow for single family homes. All zoning districts that allow for single family homes, south of ninety-five. It's another question, north of ninety-five.
This would be your map, right? This is where you could put them in.
For all of them.
We could try to figure, it's going to be tricky though, because.
Well, this, I, this is kind of what I thought when you're talking about the map, isn't it like?
Put a picture of the zoning map out there, or at least. No, I know, that'd be too much.
Quadrants or six, alright, which one do you want?
But I, I think, I think the thing is this, you know, Boston Post Road is very in Essex roads. Main Street within a half a mile, I, I, I don't think we're going to be able to do these kind of little quadrants.
No.
That are going to be exactly the same.
No.
I, I think. It, it has, you, you can't make it as small as half a mile of the train station, I, we know that's what. Everyone's shooting for half a mile of the train station, that's the trend.
I personally think that the way we have it, it's fine, it's. It's a broad question, rather than trying to be exacting.
We're good. Which of the following options would be best for the areas you chose for one family homes? And then we have two photo options. Which of the following areas should two to three family homes? All zoning, it's the same as what was there above. Which of the following options would be best for the areas you choose for three family homes and you have your photos? Of different types of. Units, which of the following areas should mixed use business and residential buildings? Be allowed, Main Street, all business, Boston Post Road, eat all business and industrial zones, none of the above, the town should not encourage other. Which of the following options would be best for the areas you choose for mixed use housing for photos? Which of the following areas should multifamily homes, four plus units be allowed, Main Street, it's all the same as before. For multifamily homes, four plus units, should they be scattered, located in one area, two and a half stories, two and a half stories or more? Obviously, that's a two. Answer question, which of the following options would be best for the areas you choose for multifamily homes? For photo options with the different stuffs. So. Are we good with the kind of the base questions? We can start plugging it into the survey. I still think we should kind of do that fact thing, um, but you know, one comment. Was made, actually Karen made it, she said, you know, sometimes you go through a survey and you just want to get through the survey, you don't want a fun, interesting fact. Because you're trying to get it done, which i- it's true.
There's a rabbit, well. It won't be that long of a survey, depending on the options you have, yeah.
To try to make it as. Fun, I guess, as we can. Which pretty house do you like that?
They give little prizes. Like Candy Crush.
Right.
So these are going to be anonymous. Maybe this.
Yeah. That's how we did it last time. I, I mean, I guess we could ask for people's names if they want to. But I, what, I guess what, we could ask for email addresses, but what, what are we going to do with this information? Email and say wrong answer, or, you know what I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just making, you know, a joke, but.
Do we want to? Point them to the Housing Task Force website for more information if they're interested or?
I, I think we get to kind of go back to. Getting this together. Getting the pictures in, having it in a format that you like. Then I can pull all the information that we did for the last survey. You know, the QR codes, all of that fun stuff. And then start getting, getting it out. And I think we left it, we were not going to do paper this time, correct?
Or Spanish.
Or Spanish.
Thank.
Zoning regulations, questions and answers, that was a leftover from the last one, if you have something to ask. Here I am.
Does anyone have questions for Chris?
No, take it off. The next meeting?
Alright. Any committee represents, or staff reports?
Committees, do you want to go first, or you want me to? Okay, so staff report, um. So the next steps are just kind of doing a little wrap up of the Housing Task Force. Um, then get the survey going, get the pictures into it. Um, I think we're kind of at a phase that we're a little. We've had quite a bit of education, I don't think we need anymore at this time, not that we can't continue to. Research and learn on our own, um, to fill you in on what I'm working on in the office. Um, I am, I did send it, send a letter of interest for a DOH grant. Um, Department of Housing. And the DOH grant. Was, my idea was a study of the B one district. Pretty much Main Street and why the accessory apartment mixed use regulation is not working. Um, and to request. A study or do a study of soils density and parking. In the area to get ideas as to. What would help to make the regulation work? So, uh, I sent that letter of interest, I get positive feedback from DOH. And, um, they asked to, me to get an estimate to them. So what I did was I contacted Jeff Jacobson's office, our town engineer, um, Jeff's office worked. Um, with. The, or Thrive, that project, which is actually kind of wrapping up due to funding and it was WS Miranda. Um, and they did a combined study for Thrive, looking at areas. Through a number of different towns, um, in the region. Looking at soils analysis and so forth, figuring that. They've just wrapped up that Thrive, they've walked, they both are familiar with Main Street, they're both familiar with downtown. They both work together, so I'm working on getting that estimate together. Um, their two estimates combined. To see if we will, how much of that will be funded. And then that would be a project, obviously, that would be an interactive project for us, um. And then in the meantime, I believe, uh, I did report to the commission that the. Board of Selectmen, um, adopted into what was formerly Murda, now it's the. I keep stumbling on it, Murda keeps getting stuck in my mouth, uh. The, um, I think CMDA is the new name of it. Um, I have sent, we had a meeting with David Corus. Who leads that, uh, project for the state. Uh, a few weeks ago, and I did send. Our accessory, our mixed use apartment regulations in the B one, I filled him in on DOH. Uh, and what we were working on with them, uh, for their review, so the way that. This would work is we opted in, but if they find an area within a half a mile of the train station, that we can establish a district. Which I think. That the mixed use housing that we already have in place. Would qualify, it at least establishes the initial boundaries. For a district to get us to qualify. So I sent that all to, uh, David and I'm waiting to hear back on that. Um, going back to just refresh your memory, the half mile of the train station, it's for all housing, not just affordable housing. And, um, there is money to help us further investigate different options, why our regs don't work, what we can do to encourage more. And I think. The both programs, um. Kind of meshed together and both parties kind of said, well, we think it'd be interesting to have. You know, both the DOH program and this, and I keep messing it up, CMDA. CRMDA, it's horrible, um. To see how that would work, having both of them in the community at the same time. So that's in the works as well. Um, and I'm hoping we'll move forward at some point, the, just to give you a refresher, Megan's not here. Thrive, that was the. Program the region was looking at, the final draft of the Thrive Plan, um, it has been put together. I believe it was cut a little short because of some funding cuts. Um, so that's something else, there'll be a presentation, I believe by River Cog. Um, explaining what's happened and, and the end result of the. Project. So does that sound like a plan?
Questions, comments?
Well, my, my one. Comment and concern about the CMDA and creating a district. Because I'm, I, I am very concerned that. Once we signed on the dotted line, accepting money for infrastructure. That that would change our zoning and allow. Uh, developers to do things that we necessarily wouldn't want to happen. So that's, that is my concern.
So, so at this point, we opted. To opt it into the program. Um, we, we don't have an approved district. And by opting in, it doesn't mean that. Some, some developer or someone is going to come in and just start changing housing and infrastructure. It's an opportunity to partner. And study housing within a half a mile of a train station, so by opting in, it's not forcing us to do anything, it makes us. It puts us in a position where there may be more funding opportunities in support to do. Pretty much exactly what this committee is doing is looking for housing opportunities and things we can do to improve housing in Old Saver.
So you're categorically saying that if we, they're, they would be giving us money to.
If, if, if our district, if we qualify.
Okay, if, if, if they accepted us and we signed on the dotted line to create this district. And a district is created. What changes to our zoning? Oc- occurs, or, I mean, it doesn't occur until a developer maybe comes in, but I would just really want to understand. You know, can someone come in wanting to put in a twenty story? Apartment building and for us to find out that we've signed away.
We're, we're not signing away.
The bill, okay, uh, uh, yeah, I, I, I want to understand.
Get a qualifying district. We can look at regulations in that district, see if those regulations are working. And get support. To help us look at what's going on and potentially, there could be an opportunity to partner with existing property owners or businesses. But we're nowhere near that. And it's not going to force zoning for twenty story apartments, the reality of it is.
Not force it, but whether they just like the eight thirty G that they can minimize.
So this program is not for affordable housing, it's for all housing.
But yeah, right.
So it's not, it's not forcing affordable housing in as far as twenty story apartments. Uh, our fire apparatus can pretty much go to thirty-eight feet maximum, so we're not going to get twenty story apartments unless someone's going to build us. Buy us a whole new fleet of.
Well, alright.
Fire.
Okay, thirty, oh, oh.
So, but, but I mean, that's the whole thing, so that, this program, it has nothing, it, it, it's. Housing in general. We could choose maybe to explore more affordable housing, but it's not forcing affordable housing, this is voluntary opting in. And it's to help the town and to support the town with resources to explore. Housing resources, which is exactly what this committee's here.
So any zoning changes would be reviewed and approved by, uh, Sam Zoning?
Right, it's not forcing any.
Force it.
It, it's assistance and looking at what we have.
Give us options.
And they could say, this district, you have regulations, everything works perfect here. So maybe the problem is that the property owners. Need assistance and funding, or there's a developer that could go through to partner to make things that the town wants. Happen that may not be happening with current or proposed zone.
Okay, alright, well, as I said, that, that is my concern.
So I mean, the, the main thing to think of is, is just because it's housing, doesn't mean it's affordable and it doesn't mean that.
I just don't want another eight thirty G.
That, that's Connecticut general statute, that's a different.
No, I know.
We can't control that, this is something in our control, and we don't have to change our regulation.
You, thank you very much for assuring me on that point, thank you.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I just have one. So I'm on the new, uh, Mariners Way redevelopment ad hoc committee. So we've met twice and, uh, it's an enthusiastic group and, um. We're just, we're getting traction, so I'll have more to report out in the future, but I just wanted to. Let everyone know that's underway, again, you know, something. It's been many attempts at Mariners Woods. So. I'll make a motion, would you?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, I appreciate your time.